Do the roll call, just to let the audience know. We are starting the meeting with a workshop today. So the first few minutes of this meeting will be a workshop. So we can discuss our budget schedule. So we have with us our district attorney, Tony Hughes, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Chris Schumacher, and our accountant. I went blank.
Steve Blum.
Steve Blum, thank you. I don't know why I went blank, but I did.
You haven't seen your space in awhile maybe.
I apologize, Steve. Okay. Chris, I'll turn the workshop over to you.
Sure, and basically, this is just a follow-up from the board advance that we had. And it's not something we have to do today. It's really just open for discussion, but at that advance, the board had set seven planning priorities. And what we have under each of those was a list on the board personnel, finances, and the other categories. And what I'd like to do is to, if the board would like to discuss any of those today, that's fine. And we'd like to end up by putting a priority score under each of those items, under those headings. And then we'll take, put it on a spreadsheet, come back and say, here's how the board feels about this. And then you can change or vote to adopt it, and then we'll use that as a budget driver. And that way, when we're looking at the budget for the year, you can say, and we'll pick this and publish it also, and put it on the website so the residents can see what the board's priorities are.
Do you want us to fill these out, one, two, three, and get them back to you with all those slots?
Yes, sir.
One, you didn't indicate, is one high or low?
Uh, one would be number one.
One would be the highest priority. Three is the lowest priority. Okay, one's high.
And then I'll mash those, like I said, and bring them back into the...
You'll blend them?
Yep. And then you can see where they are. And then if you want to make any changes, once you see them as a board, like the board may want to rank things a little bit differently as a group, but we can show you what the individual board members think. And again, use that to drive our budget.
Okay, and when do you want these back?
I'd like to get them back in the next week.
Okay.
So just fill them out and hand them, bring them over here.
And like I said, it's really just looking at those different areas. And what's important to you as a board member. And I think it'll be interesting, we put all the scores together, where these items come up. And I won't identify them by individual board members, where the priority goes, but we'll go over each category, and then say, okay, you've ranked these one through five, one through seven. Do you want to make any changes that now as a group? And then if you're looking for something in the budget, it's like, well, where is this? Well, this is priority seven. At that point, you know, you may want to move the list and say, well, I'd like to change this.
And there's one addition that I would probably make, is as we're going through it, and we can kind of agree to what nomenclature you use, but I think the stack ranking is a good thing, but we also probably should put whether it's a, you know, high medium or low priority, or a must-have, or a nice-to-have. Because there's probably some of those things, you might rank a one, two, or three, that I would consider a must-do, if it's infrastructure, or if it's, you know, something that may have some, you know, risk, or some kind of impact. We can either do high, medium, low, or must-have, or...
I thought that's what the one would indicate. The one indicates a high, so...
So we're doing a one, two, or three as a high, medium, low, not stack ranking, one, two, three, four, five, six?
No.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I thought, each one of these get a one, two, or a three, as I read it.
And so one is a...
High-ranking.
High-ranking, high priority.
Yes.
Okay, alright, that clears that up.
And there could be a couple that you have no ranking or no priority for, if they don't make it. And then we may, you know, those will be identified, saying, nobody ranked these as in their one, two, or three, is that where you want to leave them?
Maybe we can, we'll put a zero for those, just if it, no interest?
I don't care.
Okay.
And I just, I want to think about it again, we'll bring it back.
I've gone through it, and I didn't see anything that didn't deserve a minimum of a three. I think the question is, how much is, what is the relative scale between one and three? Is it two deals, or is it five to one every time you go up?
Level of effort.
Two is five times three, and one is ten times two, or is it geometric, or what is it?
That's part of...
And I think when it, when you come to budget time, when you look at that, you might go, hey, we have, all of us have this as a number-one priority, but none of us want to fund it.
Well, and that thing, that comes into play too, Chris. You know, we're going through that, is, you know, when, well, level of effort. And that might come into some of these, like policy rewrites, and that type of stuff, that budget may not be the primary driver. It might be, do we have the internal resources to do it, or the manpower? And if not, we may have to go externally, or, you know, bring somebody in. Level of effort, cost, and sequencing. Because we might have a bunch of priorities, but we might not be able to have the head count or...
To me, if it's regulatory, it's a one, and you can't change it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that simple.
Yeah. I agree. This is good, though.
Are you going to talk the budget also, the timeline?
And that is the initial budget timeline. It's very similar to the one that we used last year. And if there's anything, again, you don't have to make those comments today, you can turn it in, that if you might, you know, want additional workshops dedicated to something specific, or an additional budget session.
Well, this might be the time to bring this up. I met with Russ Wire last week on the methodology, trying to get him some maps and things to show him how Gateway, Pelican Reserve, and all this is put together. And trying to start the process of what he's looking for to do this new methodology assessment. I think it's pretty straightforward that to enact this this year is going to be almost impossible to do. But we can start it out. And one of the big things he wanted to do is to divide our funds up into essentially four accounts. And this goes into the budget that we can start setting up to where we don't have to do it next year, we'll already have it in place. Budget item one, in both the 001 and the 002, and the Stony Brook account, would be roads, landscaping associated with roads, streets, lights, and monuments, signs and monuments. So everything that's in that, what he's looking to see is what is our budgetary cost. So we have five or six roads that we now own, or we're going to own. We have Gateway Boulevard and Griffin, and Commerce Lakes that we don't own, but we own the landscaping, the streetlights, the monuments, and the signs. So he says, I want to see a budget that's got all that. And then I will have an assessment methodology of how you pay for that. Essentially, trip generation is what he's looking at. Then I want to see your storm sewer. Oh, and also, on each one of these, he wants two accounts, O and M, CIP. So a listing, and in the CIP, stagger it out, if it's a five-year thing, 10-year plan, whatever it is, so that he can see what you're looking at. Now, some of this stuff, we're probably going to rob from what has been done to this point, and divvy it up into the accounts. Right now, we just have one list. What he wants to see it is funneling out into the applicable category that it goes. No longer, if this is approved, will we one shoe fit all. Storm sewers, ponds, and wetlands will be under a separate deal. Steve and I were talking, and we were, the idea that projects would be separately listed. That's kind of hard, difficult to guesstimate those on a budget. Recreation would be a third one, and then the last one is admin. So you'll have four different budget items in Gateway, of which is in the 01, 02 account in Stony Brook, that basically each one of us will have. The only thing that we came up with, and Bill, you might know, was at Pelican, is, does Pelican have a parks and recreation line item? I couldn't think of anything.
No, I don't think so.
Don't have anything. So is Town Center a budgetary item?
No.
It's not item?
Not at all.
Okay, okay. I'm excited.
Thanks, Bob.
Is Russ, is Russ going to...
I was looking at you, and I heard the noise out there.
I don't have ventriloquists.
Ventriloquists. So anyway, Russ is looking for us to get our budget. We have to do this stuff anyway. The only thing that we are doing differently, he's suggesting, is instead of lumping it all up in 01, he wants to see them separated. And I talked to Steve, and Steve's going to try to take and get the account numbers, and start divvying them then to these four deals, so that our job would be to review those in the budget. And then if there are others, for example, like we know in stormwater, we got some issues with maintenance that we've got to add. We just add them in and put them as a new account number or a new line item.
Is Russ going to come and present what his ideas are to us on this?
Yeah, yeah. He wanted to get an advance, because he knew we were doing budget. He knew we were starting budget, so...
Run this for me again, please.
Roads, which would be inclusive of landscaping, signs, the roads themselves, streetlights, and monuments. That's the one category. Second category would be the storm sewers, the ponds and wetlands. That's one category. Third category would be parks and recreation. And fourth category is admin. We sat there, and Stephen and I talked earlier this afternoon, I can't think of any others that we have that would necessitate a separate category. And Russ wasn't of the opinion that he could think of any. Obviously, utility, enterprises, separate. The only thing we've got to do on enterprise fund is get the correct multiplier that we assign, things like staff, this building, trucks, how much of their time is enterprise versus how much of their time goes to 001, 002, 005, whatever the account is. Which is, I don't think it's going to be that difficult to do.
Chris, will you reach out to Russ Weir and get this in writing, what exactly it is that he wants?
I was going to write it up and get it to Steve and to Chris, and then I can't send it to you all direct. So that's part of the problem we've got with this.
Well, that's, that's the point. Should, Chris should be the one to contact, and he's the one that should get the information and get Russ to provide it to you, so that you can disseminate it. Let's get it from Russ. I appreciate that.
And he will be next week a guest of PPA, and he'll be making the same presentation on the assessment methodology as he did at the board advance. And Mr. Tinkle may be attending that meeting also. And really just trying to get them on board in the formation of this, and get their input and work together with them.
So if you do that, and then get all that information to all the board members, I'd appreciate that. Because then you get directly from him what it is exactly he's looking for, what he would like, Chris.
I have just a quick question for Chris. Hey, Chris, with the staff and budget templates, I would imagine what happens is, you will have your direct reports trickle these, this template, or their line items down to their specific work groups. They put their budget together, their capital and maintenance, and their operating, and then drill that up to Mike, and to Kenny, and they'll drill it up to you, and then you have a master list, where we can track line items all the way back to the specific ask for the individual departments, right? Okay. Yeah, great. It's fantastic.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Kraft for helping me with this. Since 2013, our budget went up 22.10 percent. From 2010, it went up 48.91 percent. So when we look at this budget, we have to be very careful about what increases and what we need, because the residents are the one who pay for this increase. Also, I would like, if it's possible, in the 2014 budget, they had a comparison from 2014 to 2013 of the increase, and that increase was 17.54 percent. I would like that to be put in the budget, so we could see what increase there is, if that's a possibility. Just a request.
You mean per line item?
No, this is a summary, budget summary.
I can't see there.
I'll summarize.
I mean, what is it broken down into, what categories?
It's broken down into the 001, 002...
Just overall increase in...
It's just a summary.
See, to me, that doesn't mean anything. I want to see what within that category is causing the budget. Because, for example, today that we're going to talk about is, we've been notified of a pre-enforcement action. That's either going to be a fine, or we spend money. We don't have any choice on that. We don't have any choice.
But we do have a choice on how much we increase our budget. And that is important.
On non-regulatory stuff. That's correct.
And we will work on that when we get into the details of the budget. Today, we're really just looking at...
Timing.
Our timing of the budget work schedule, and if we agree that this, you know, for at least for right now, we're in agreement with this. If we need to add some workshops, we can. But I, you know, that's what we want to look at today, is...
But I also want us, when they redo it, to bear in mind that the residents do have to pay for an increase, and they have been going up. And we have to bear in mind that, you know, their pocket is not totally full and keep coming out. Thank you.
So is there any comments on the schedule?
Nope.
And we'll be back with the first meeting next month, and review this during the workshop time. And we'll also talk more about the budget schedule, in case you'd like to make any adjustments at that time. And we'll take all these comments to heart.
On the assumption that Russ gives you the same thing he gave me, which I'll be getting to you before you call him, so save you a lot of time. I'm assuming that the budget template then will try to set up into this new format that he's looking at, to where we divide those four accounts?
I'd certainly like to try. It could be a lot of work for this year, but we can certainly start moving in that direction.
Yeah, if Stephen can take those and start dividing them into the four accounts by the line item number, that'll help a lot. And then the only thing staff needs to do, because you already know, things that we have to do, is just add them to whatever account needs to be added.
And then you'd be ready next year.
Yeah.
Okay, I will move us into the regular meeting. And if anybody's come in since the workshop started, if you have one of these, please turn it to silent. And we have speakers. Oh, yeah, if you wanted to sign up to address the board, there's sheets in the back that you should sign up and hand it to one of these gentlemen here at the end.
And yes, first, Jim Brand. I'd like to talk about Storm Lakes and development at Griffin and Gateway.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy April. April showers are on the way. I'm James Brand, 10154 Avalon Lake Circle, Hampton Park, HOA Resident Board Director. Today, I'm addressing two issues. Hampton Park, Storm Lakes, and the proposed four-story high-rise development at Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard. I think it's important to review the timeline, recent timeline, of the Hampton Park Storm Lakes. On October 17th, 2017, Carl Barocco, Russell Smith, and David Caldwell told Hampton Park residents at an annual Hampton Park meeting that Hampton Park Storm Lakes were in full compliance of Lee County and South Florida Water Management District Code. They went on to say, and I think it was Russell Smith who said this, he's the senior executive of Lennar, "Gateway Services CDD is the worst CDD that Lennar had ever dealt with." I think you should be proud of that. That's wonderful. On December...
Gold star.
Thank you, Ed, and others in the audience. On December the 8th, you have an attachment of a letter, 2017, that DMJA, David M. Jones Jr. and Associates, landscape architects, sent this memo to Barocco and Associates stating that, and this is a paraphrase from the document, "Litoral plantings in the lakes met or exceeded code requirements and appear to be healthy." That was on December the 8th. On December 17th, you all requested that Lee County Code Enforcement inspect the Hampton Park Storm Lakes. That was done on the 21st and the 26th by a code enforcement officer, along with several from Gateway Services and several residents. On January the 5th, 2018, Lee County Code Enforcement issued violations on all 14 lakes, multiple violations on each lake, including not enough water trees, litorals, types of litorals, and aerators missing or not working. What happened between December the 8th and December 21st? Meet or exceed, and then all of a sudden, violations on all the lakes. End of January 2018, Lennar met with Lee County Code Enforcement, was given until April 30th, just a couple of weeks from now, to remediate the violations. April 30th, Lee County has scheduled a re-inspection. On March the 4th, 2018, Lennar requested that you all give them time and schedule a turnover, action by you, to turn the lakes over. May 3rd, indicating that all trees, litorals, and aeration remediation will be completed, and certification provided by Lennar. Ed tells me, based on his communications, it'll be the same firm that did this on December the 8th. Well, that's a heck of a lot of credibility, isn't it? On March the 6th today, I was notified that, by Lennar, that the HOA resident board of intent of Lennar to turn the lakes over to either Gateway Services CDD or the HOA on May 3rd. I urge the board not to accept certification of remediation from Lennar. Please, wait until you get the report from Lee County Code Enforcement. I also gave you a handout from Kathy's, Ms. Flaherty's favorite, I don't even know what to call it, Gateway Sun. But it's really, it's a good, it's a good article for a change, talking about the proposed development at Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive. I urge you all to take the lead in opposing that development. We need that development, like we need more traffic on Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive, which we're going to get plenty of with the new high school, the existing high school, and the two grade schools, plus all the residents in the neighborhood. Any questions of me?
Go ahead.
I don't know if it goes to you, but I'll run it through you, probably hit Tony. What legal standing do we have relative, is this going to come up? I'm hearing the jungle drums beating in Gateway Greens about this development. Do we have a dog in this fight, I guess is the question? Do we have anything that we, they do, obviously, we've got water and sewer, and we have amenities to handle them for that. But when it comes down to things like the traffic and/or the way it's being built, the way they've got ingress egress, if you've seen the pictures of how they're going to come in, they're going to have access off the road that goes back to the old bank, access off Gateway Boulevard, and an access off of Griffin Drive. Do we have any say-so in any of this?
From the perspective, if there are any adverse impacts to any district facilities, the district would have an opportunity to comment. For example, depending on what process they're going through, how their stormwater management system would work, and how it integrates into ours, they have to comply with South Florida management criteria, as well as our permit criteria manual. So we have an opportunity there. But the zoning per se, no. The driveway cuts, the access cuts, as you mentioned, now that they're Lee County roads, they control how those occur per their administrative code and per their traffic manual. Again, absent there being any adverse impact on the district facilities.
Well, what I'm hearing is what Jim pointed out, that I think everybody's hearing, is good God, one more car. I think the requirement is, they have to have 2.2, the new Lee County requirement, is 2.2, planned for 2.2 parking per unit. So that means there's going to be 700 cars if they build at that size. I don't know that you can put that many parking lots. They may, they may have to go to five or six stories. I don't know. Do we have a requirement that a four is the height? I don't think we have any airplane issues, do we? Air heights for the airport?
Yeah, I don't know if there's an navigation, navigation, I'm not aware of any. And that's a zoning issue, that's a Lee County issue.
The reason I bring it up is, is that other than roads and traffic, which we now know no longer own the road, that's why I'm trying to figure out what, what do we have to say?
As an entity, it seems as though we have the right to say that we oppose the rezoning.
You can, you can make a comment saying, you know, our residents have expressed to us the concerns they have with regards to the potential development. And to the extent that there was a traffic impact study, or S T I S, that shows the distribution of traffic is going to be greater than originally planned on the roads the district owns and maintains, then we have an opportunity to say, hey, guys, you need to have them mitigate that, because the intensity or density of that project is too high. I mean, but typically, commercial uses generate more trips than residential uses typically.
So I don't get in trouble after the fact. I'm planning on attending that meeting, and I'm sure others are too. I'm assuming that we can all go, we don't have a problem, we just can't talk.
Correct. And what I would suggest also is, when's the, when's the meeting, or hearing?
Tuesday.
April 10th.
Is that before the hearing examiner, or...
No, it's a...
It's over at the church.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that there also be noticed, posted on the district website, and I can prepare one. I think we've done this before. It says, note that one or more board members may be in attendance, they will not be participating, but just to let the whole, you know, everyone know that you all might be there.
If I may, my whole point of bringing this up to you all, is you're the elected leaders of Gateway. You're our representative. And I don't think it's too much, whether there's a legal issue or not, for you to stand on about zoning or any of that. I still think you all should find a voice to speak out against something like this. That was my whole point. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
And next, we have Mr. Bob Gippert. I'd like to talk about conservation area transfer. A timely topic.
Good afternoon. Bob Gippert, Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. Before I get into the conservation areas, one other thing I just want to update you on. I spoke to the board at the beginning meeting in March about the lack of cooperation with Lennar in putting in the downspout bubblers that we have been requesting, and that they've agreed to do since May 31st of 17. Now we're a month later, five weeks later, and they still haven't done the first one. So to tag on to what Jim just asked for, I need the voice, please, of the district to get behind this. When we started this initiative, there were less than 2% of the homes built in that area. Now they're pushing 40%, and we're just not getting any indication. I spoke to Caldwell today, David, and I always get the right things, well, I'm going to talk to the people. I'm tired of people talking to people. You're talking to wrong people. Find somebody who will make the decision and get it done. And I guess I'm asking for the collective voice of the district and the district manager to try and make that happen. And if it need be, then let's get Tony involved. But let's get them to do something for things.
Any reason we can't just have Chris write a letter?
Chris makes phone calls, he's done a couple times.
Just have Chris write a letter? And then indicate that if it's not done, we'll turn it to legal.
Long overdue, but thank you.
Bob, they're already calling us the worst.
Well, I know. And we're trying to get even worser.
It took a while for that one to sink in, but I got it now.
David Caldwell indicated that they didn't have any problem when he was at, I believe it was that meeting, that they would be willing to do it.
Well, I've got it in writing. I mean, I've got it from Jack Turner. I've got it all kind of, yeah, we're going to do it, but nobody does it. I talked to David today. Oh, yeah, I'll check in there, because we should be doing it.
Chris, when you send that letter, tell them that we, we need a start date, when they anticipate starting this project.
Or they will go back to the first date that they told us they'd do it, and retrofit.
And yes...
I'd be happy with that.
Well, and you said that you'd pay for that.
Absolutely. But it's one thing, Margaret, to pay it when they're installing, you're adding 20 feet of pipe and a bubbler. That's going to be less than a hundred bucks. But to go back later and dig everything up and relay it, that's major money. We're spending like $4,000 a home to do this now. And we won't have to do everything, but it's still going to be a lot more costly to do it after the fact than to do it when they build it. Okay, now to something less controversial. The conservation and wetlands areas in Pelican Reserve have been proposed that the transfer and the maintenance responsibility ownership has moved from Lennar to the district by virtue of some letter that was written on November the 29th. From then until about two weeks ago, been trying to find out if that has happened, did it come to the board? I made a number of inquiries, I haven't gotten an answer to that. But in my informal inquiries, the answer is no, it hasn't been accepted by the board yet, not formally.
What's this on, Bob?
This is on the conservation areas of Pelican Reserve, and Sun City Nine Holes, Matarita, the Nine Hole Golf Course, Camerel. And it also includes some areas that are not contiguous to Pelican Reserve, and it's an area called, it sounds like, you know, something out of Nevada, but Area 9, which is west of I-75. And most of you, I think, are familiar with at least, you know, somewhat familiar with the concept. The thing that concerns me are a couple of things. First of all, Area 9 is not a part of Pelican Reserve. There have been issues with that area from day one, where we don't have actual access, we being the district, or the service provider doesn't have access to service this area. There's no way to get in. There's some kind of a dispute between whoever owns the land and Lennar. And I really don't care about all that, but it's, it's an hanging legal issue, that they are now trying to transfer over to the district, they being Lennar, because this is all one big package. Here you go, folks, take it. My second issue relative to this whole thing is the maintenance on these areas ceased My second issue relative to this whole thing is the maintenance on these areas ceased in November on direction of Lennar, and the maintenance was due two days later. So now we're on the hook for, I don't know, pick a number, I'm going to say $35,000, $40,000? And supposedly, that start date is the 1st of December?
Can we go backwards? Did we, Chris, on November 20, or on or about November 29th, receive an operational transfer request from Lennar? Because I, I don't recall that being discussed.
Yes, we do have that. We have the permit transfer form, and I have not executed it. I have it, and Mr. Gephardt and I talked about it earlier in the week, and I told him we'd bring it up at the board meeting because these issues are now intertwining with our regulatory.
But going back, I'm trying to figure out, knowing what they're going to say, what on November 30th, if we received it on the 29th, kept us from putting it on the next agenda to approving it?
There were historical documents that evidently, according to Lennar, all that business had been done years ago, and accepted by the board years ago, and the transfer form was the only outstanding piece of business.
I think.
But you know where, you know where I'm going.
Right, but I think what needs to, if I may mention, I think what's important to always differentiate and distinguish is transfer of ownership by deed, conveyance of aneasement by aneasement or dedication, and transfer of the operating permit, or the permit to the operating phase, completely different animals. The acquisition of ownership of a parcel of land by a deed, subject to an environmental resource permit, individual one, or permit for South Florida, does not result in a transfer of the operating permit, or the permit to the operating phase. And so what WCI is trying to do now, Lennar, is trying to mush those together and say, y'all accepted conveyance of some of this property in 2003 as part of the Sun City Center Pelican Reserve bond issue. And so, heck, it's been yours all along, you should take the operating permits. Well, the problem is, on some of these, the conservation areas, because WCI then went into bankruptcy and other issues, and they did not engage in the requisite mitigation, compliance, environmental activities, and monitoring for five, six, whatever number of years, that did not get completed, as I understand, until 16, 17 timeframe. That's how I understand it. So now Lennar is in the position of, okay, we want to transfer over the oper, we're now certifying the operating phases. We want to now transfer the operating permit to the ultimate operating entity, the CDD. And, and I haven't, I don't believe I've seen that package, but I believe, I have some materials from way back when where, yeah, they, apparently they put in together in one package, or South Florida did, or Boiland Environmental did, Pelican Reserve Nine Holes, Pelican Reserve Sun City, Area 9, Pelican Reserve Water Use, Pelican Reserve Sun, and a number of different permits that are different areas, and they're trying to get them transferred overall at one time. But there's a huge difference between the ownership, getting aneasement, and the transfer of the operating permit. And Rhonda, WCI, Charles, David, all those guys are trying to say, you own it, you should be the operating entity. We're saying, well, it wasn't ready. Okay, now it might be, but then, as Mr. Gephardt has indicated, they, Lennar stopped maintaining it the day they submitted a packet.
Yeah, they told their providers not to work.
Bob, is there any component of that, notwithstanding 9, I agree with you on 9, is there any component of that, that on November 29th, they could have come in, split it apart, and asked for an operational deal that we could have granted at that time? Any component?
Yeah, sure. We want it. P-PAC wants to have control of our conservation areas. That's not an issue.
Yeah, and one other aspect too of South Florida permit is that the permittee is responsible for compliance with the permit up until it's transferred to the operating entity. So for WCI Lennar to say, we stopped engaging in the monitoring, whatever.
Those are my words, and I got that from the contractor. I'll let them speak for themselves. But the contractor is no longer working in these areas on the explicit direction of WCI Lennar.
Okay. Having dealt with Ron and Dave for a long time, my, my deal is that on November 29th, when they get, they brought it to us, which is what they're implying, did it have deficiencies that we could not take it over?
Yes.
Did we give them a letter to that effect?
That yes is me, because of what I know about Area 9.
Here we are, four months later.
Yes. I've been trying to bring this up sooner and sooner, Ed, I understand.
But if, if, if it has deficiencies, and there is no part of that that we can accept, for whatever reasons there may be, then I think we got to get a letter to them stating book, chapter, verse, why we can't take it over. And if it means certain ponds having different letters than other ponds, or certain conservation areas having different circumstances than others, then we split it apart. But what I'm really trying to get to is there anything that's good enough that we can accept, maybe one only? Is there any part of it that's acceptable?
If it was brought up to its current level of service, we'll take it tomorrow. But I don't want to be getting a new parcel with an $80,000 bill.
Bob, does that go for everything?
No.
Okay.
There are parts of this that are totally different.
Can we do this? Can we take and get from you, P-PAC, what you believe are those conservations and/or ponds, I don't know if it's, it's both, but what you believe can be done by bringing it up to speed and get those five, six, seven, two, whatever the number is, out of the way?
Yes, I can tell you three of them right now that are ready today.
If they do the update?
No, no, this, these are updated only because Lennar's not doing the work, now it's the Pelican HOA. So they first shifted a couple of these expenses to the.
Do they have to come to us and ask for those to be separately split out, Tony?
I would say yes.
So the ball's in their part to ask that. Can we send them a letter saying, hey, if you split out these three, we'll take those three?
I think we should split them all.
What I would suggest, what I would suggest is, is if we can get a recommendation from P-PAC as to the ones that they recommend being transferred, accepting from operating person, we have that in the record, and then we have, so then the staff, Android, engineer can verify that, and then we can bring that to the board.
Yeah, it seems to me that the ball's in our part to respond to them, if we haven't done it as of November 29th, to tell them why we didn't do it on November 29th or thereafter.
Well, I don't know when I got the letter.
Let's just be very clear, and since I'm looking at, you know, conditions of acceptance, and if, let's say there's eight, these three are ready to go as-is, as-is. These three will be accepted under these conditions.
Bingo.
Area 9, no condition will be accepted.
Absolutely. Now, when I'm speaking, I am speaking for P-PAC and not for Gateway. And the reason I'm putting that little disclaimer in there, there is an area on the west side of Tree Line that is of no interest to Pelican Reserve, but it may be of interest to.
That's Area 9.
No, 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 no.
He's talking about the west side of Tree Line. There's one over there on that deal, but.
Well, there's Area 9, and then there's this commercial area that'll be developed in the future on the west side of Tree Line, not the west side of 75.
Yes.
That is of not interest to us, but I'm sure it may be to the district.
Not even any interest to us?
Okay.
I don't know how.
And I don't know why they think we would ever want to take that.
Bob, I thought you wanted to wait until October 1st.
No, no, that's west.
I did. And I still do. But if we take, you know, if they give it to us whole today, I'm not going to fight that battle. We did want it, we asked them, and remember, we were asking these people for this information since last May. When we started our budget process in April, May, they had plenty of opportunity to tell us they were going to get it.
If we do this, and, and I totally agree with what Doug is saying, if we split these things out into the various categories of splitting them out, what are they going to say?
Well, they tell me it's not theirs anymore, it's yours.
I'm sorry?
It's not theirs, they don't care what we do. They think they gave it to us.
What I can't understand is that if we could come up with that, why couldn't they? Why did they blend them?
Well, it doesn't matter now. I think, let's take.
We answered the question, we just go back.
Bob's going to work with, with Chris to turn that around, and then we send it over.
And one last thing for clarification, I'm going to launch a little bit on what Tony was talking about. They did make the effort to give all this in 2003 or whatever. In 2008, '09, when P-PAC was formed, we initially thought we had all the wetlands and all the ponds. And we let a contract out, we had public bidding, somebody won the contract. Shortly after, the contract was implicated, and Aqua Genics was the one that was in charge of the wetlands, they were contacted by WCI to cease and desist anymore. One of our communities got in trouble by entering the conservation area, and it was a lot of who struck John, and letters were written, fines were assessed.
Is that the Barry Ernst letter?
And that's, that developed the Barry Ernst letter of 2011, where they said that it was all coming back to them, and they were going to maintain it, April 14th, 2011. And it said, and I quote, he says, "We are close to finalizing the plan, and we'll be turning over the ownership and maintenance to the GS CDD." Of course, that's never happened now, from 11 until now.
Tony, if we get, if P-PAC gets the information to Chris, Chris writes the letter, that handles pretty much what I would call the engineering. Is there anything on the legal side that's going to nix this?
I'd have to look at, the only one I can think of right now is Area 9.
Area 9.
Off the top of my head. And Bob, I have a map that may show the areas that are involved, and I think we.
I do have one, and I can confirm with you. Mine's in terrible because it's black and white. Yes.
Chris, are you familiar with any deficiencies that exist in these areas?
Well, Mr. Gephardt's correct, we've been discussing that because the maintenance contracts were dropped, and I see about $20,000 in contract work, at least it hasn't been done. But the, Lennar's position is, here's the packet, here's the engineers' acceptance, here's the water management's district, you are in compliance, here's your form to sign for the operation and maintenance entity, and that's in the.
See, that's the one I'm worried about. That's exactly what I'm worried about.
So it's an interrelated issue, and I told Mr. Gephardt, we can just wait till Thursday because it's.
See, if they, if they've got a engineer's certification, and this is Hampton Park deja vu, if we got the certification, and I had this stuck up my X-axis this week by South Florida, we approved it, what part of that do you people at Gateway not understand? We approved it, you should have clicked your heels and signed off on it. My deal is, is that what they're going to do here? November 29th, if they had the certification from their engineer, whether it was false or not, if they had the certification, and give them the benefit of the doubt that it was correct, and they had South Florida's certification, my question is, what kept us from approving it on November 30th? That's what we're going to get hit with.
Okay, and when we're doing all the investigation, an interesting thing to look at is the woods and wetland contract with Lennar, because a lot of dates got changed to pre-November by hand. Scratch out those December treatments, they'll be now done before November.
Can I go back, Bob, and I don't want to put you in a corner, but was there on November 29th, the certification from their engineer and the certification from South Florida that we really didn't have a reason not to approve it, on November 29th?
Yeah, the same, the same, I didn't understand what was going on when I got the, I don't even remember I got it. I got it sometime later. I wasn't on the distribution.
But there were other deficiencies.
But the Area 9 deficiency and the west of Tree Line, absolutely.
But the other ones, was there anything wrong with those? Because what they're going to argue is, is that, guys, you pick up the tab for the $20,000 because you're the ones who sat on it for five months. This is what I'm hearing exactly.
Well, one, the question of five months, it's a question of three days. You know, if we'd, if they had sent this on December 2nd, they would have had to bring everything up to speed. But that wasn't just random, that we got it on the 29th.
There was a period.
They let the period go right to the end, and then, oh, the 29th, let's get rid of this before December 1st.
Because there was a cleaning due or something?
Oh, right, because there's annual treatments due. That was the intent. Thank you.
They're slandering snakes.
And that's all we have for the public comment.
I have requested, Tyler, do you have any comments on any of that with those areas in Pelican Reserve? Put you on the spot. Yeah.
Uh, no, ma'am? No, no. Very good.
The request came, so I would, you want to ask him anything specific?
No. I hesitate, but yes.
I wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to say.
But we get into this, what's South Florida, what's South Florida going to say?
What's South Florida going to say in regards to the conversion to the operation phase for those wetlands?
Yeah, at that, on, on November 29th. Relative to this issue, what we now are talking about, that they, they played games with the date to avoid a, a, a treatment, is what I'm understanding.
I, I don't know the date that South Florida issued the.
Certification.
I don't know the date.
Had to have been before November 29th.
So, I don't know. I mean, South Florida's not going to have your back in trying to push Lennar to do that treatment, if that's your question.
Say it again?
South Florida's not going to have your back in trying to push Lennar to do that treatment.
That's exactly what I thought, and it means we're going to eat it, is what's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Oh, you might as well stay there because we don't have any more comments, is that right? Is that the only two? And District Engineer is up next.
Well, good evening. My name is Tyler Wainwright, I'm with Tech for Tech. So we have one item on here, which is our status updates. Just kind of recap through these real quick. The AutoCAD assistance, that's sort of an as-needed on hold, there's nothing pending for any parties to be doing right now on that one. The storage facility, that one's been submitted for permitting, we did get the REI from South Florida, we're still awaiting a one from Lee County, so we're working on the South Florida response now, and as soon as we get Lee County's comments, we will address those. Pelican Reserve Stormwater Database, nothing new on that one, on hold, hydraulic modeling. A correction to that, or an update to that, is that we do have all the field calibration data from Gateway, and we are working to update those irrigation models now, and force main models. Phase 2 Lake Bank Facilities Plan, surveying is underway for that. We are working to prepare the facilities plan for the next, next round of lakes. So field work is underway, office work is continuing on. I think June 30th is the date that we're shooting forward to have that facilities plan in front of you all. I'm not sure if that's a board date, that's just a date that we're planning on having completed. The amended engineers' report, that one, there's, as we understand it, there's a requisition request that is going to come from WCI slash Lennar. So until we receive that one, I don't know if there's any progress that can be made on that particular item, so we're just waiting to see what the requisition request is from Lennar. The storm pipe cleaning bid is probably what I'm going to talk to you the most about today. So last time, I believe Stephen came to the meeting, and there was a direction to break it up basically into smaller chunks of communities, neighborhoods. So I think the discussion at the time was to break it into the southern half of Gateway Greens we're talking about, break it into like five areas. We actually ended up breaking it into seven because there's seven HOAs in the southern half, so we broke it out by HOA. We've got that done, we've got the bid sheet prepared. I don't know if, you know, five was the magic number, if you wanted to just break it out by HOA. HOA is seven of them, so that's what we went with. Now, there's been some action since then that may change what ends up being bid, I'm sure Supervisor Tinkell will talk about that, so I will let him discuss that in a little bit. And then the Lake Bank Construction Management, so contractors have begun work at Lake 110, they're about two weeks in now, they're moving forward, a couple irrigation snafus so far, but nothing too major, they're getting that work through, so proceeding, proceeding well.
Okay, before we start on that, and I'll start on this, and Mrs. Flaherty, did you have any questions from?
I, Dr. Avell. Okay. I want to have you thank Mr. Nelson for sending us the correction of how you're being paid and how you stopped putting in the invoice for the payment. My other question is, though, what, you did get paid for being here when you weren't supposed to have put in the invoice, is that going to come out of the amount of money we pay you, or, just curious?
I cannot answer that question for you.
Okay, well, thank you.
There's been no payment since, I, I got the invoices all the way back to, through December, and there's been no payment for attending meetings.
No, so.
There's no invoice, we haven't paid anything for those.
I don't remember who brought it up, but somebody brought it up in November, and we said, hey, you're right, so we quit billing in November.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that.
Any, Mr. Guy, did you have anything on the update of task authorization?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Banks?
No.
Yeah, a couple. Are you guys doing any inspection on ponds 60 and 110?
Uh, no, sir, we are not doing inspections as of yet, so we sent in a proposal to do inspection services.
Where are we at on that?
We have sent in a proposal to do inspection.
Margaret, have you signed that proposal? We are not supposed to be doing this work without inspectors, people. That's against DEP.
Propose is under Mike's time to bring up.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to get it approved.
Yes, sir.
Good, 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 good. Storm, you mentioned six, seven HOAs, and Gateway Greens will only have one HOA. Are you talking about neighborhoods?
I guess HOA is not the right word.
Neighborhoods, neighborhoods. That would be the one south of Gateway Greens?
There's seven that I think we came up with, and they are Fairway Isles, Hampton Greens, Mahogany Run, Saddle Dunes, Santa Luz, Summer Wind, and I guess another Fairway Isles maybe, maybe there's two neighborhoods there. But yeah, we broke it out by neighborhood is how we broke it.
You've got the ones on the south side.
South end, yes, sir.
The next one, I'll hit Hampton Park and then come back to the storm sewer because we've got a legal issue. Hampton Park, today you sent out, did, did the whole board get that letter?
I didn't send it out to the whole board, I sent it out to Chris.
We need a, we need a strategy on that. What, what this is about is a month, two months ago, they sent out 56, 57 comments on the Hampton Park project.
Who?
Tetra Tech did. To Lennar Baraco. Baraco came back and responded to them. Some of the responses were of a nature, that's none of your business because you're not taking them over, all the way up to, we're working on it and everything in between. And inclusive of sending drawings, videos, that type of stuff. Tetra Tech is going through that. If I hear one more time a phone call, the, the, I don't want to use the word "ret," although it's as close to the word "threat" as I can get, from them is, is that we will accept this stuff at May 4th, at our May 4th meeting, I think it's the 4th.
May 3rd.
Third, third meeting, or they're going to take drastic action.
They mean Lennar.
They mean Lennar.
What are they going to call it, something worse than worse?
Hey, can, can we go a little lower? The, the issue is, is that this, this, this thing is just getting crazily out of hand. I don't want to burn the people of Hampton Park. I want to try to get this thing approved, and almost would look the other way on some of these issues. So I, when I talked to Tyler the other day, I said, because Lennar is wanting something from us back, as to what do you want to have done that we can do that is of a major nature, that's a deficiency, to be corrected? So Tyler put together an interim list that is ready to go to Lennar and to Baraco, even though Baraco came to their office Monday?
Monday.
And told them, we ain't doing nothing else. Now, that's paraphrasing what they said, but that's the gist. I talked to Rhonda and I said, I'm telling you right now, that isn't cutting it. I don't care what certifications you have from South Florida, you have provided us by your own engineer's submittal documentation that justifies it's deficient. How can we go out and accept it on that transfer and the very next day that we sign that, South Florida can come in here and put us under a non-compliance and we pick up the tab? That's ridiculous. So the issue is, Rhonda's deal, tell me what you need and we'll look at it. So where we're at right now is getting that list that Tyler just prepared, and even though we're identifying it as interim, it will give them a flavor of the items that we feel are major to be done in order for us to accept this thing on, on or about May 3rd. It appears that the Lee County Development Order issues look like, knock on wood, that's going to sail through. It does look like they are out putting in the trees, putting in the laterals, and doing the aeration. That looks like that's clear. So I think what we need is to have some type of a guidance to Tyler to get that letter to Lennar to say, we've met the deadline, we're telling you right now, you've now got, what, 25, 26 days to get this done so that we can inspect it and then sign off on it May the 3rd.
And I'm going to stop you there because these communications like this, Rhonda should be calling Chris. All of these things should be being handled by our district manager.
I can sit there and tell her that, Margaret, until the cows come home, but if she wants to call me, she's going to call me.
Well, you can tell her.
I can tell her that all the time, but she calls me.
So, you know, when she's telling you, we, the district needs to do these things and you're saying we're not going to, you're speaking as, at Tinkle.
I make sure she understands, I make sure she understands that. I say, I'm one vote.
You need to tell her that she needs to, for these communications to go through Chris Schumacher.
But we've got to get, and that's where we're at, that's why I bring it up, we've got to get that list. I can't send that list to her, Chris has got to send the list. We need to get that to her so that we're not the ones holding this up on May 1st, May 2nd, or May 3rd.
So Tyler, will you get that information to Chris?
And Chris has got it.
So that he can get in touch with Rhonda so that this can be handled through the appropriate channels?
Yes, ma'am. Chris has got it, I sent it to him this afternoon. So just to clarify where we're at here. So, of the recent submittals, Baraco made their, their most recent resubmittal to the district on March 19th. It was partial. They then last week dropped off a bunch more videos and plans, and then this week gave us another set of surveys. So Lennar has this big push to get everything done by May 3rd, which, hey, it's fine, you know, we'll review as much as we can between now and then, but, I mean, we've gotten a resubmittal as recent as Tuesday. So, we are working through all the things that we have been presented with. I've gone through, we have gone through, and developed a list of, hey, here's everything that we still have issue with as of right now. This ain't it, we haven't gone through your stuff that you gave us Tuesday yet. So, we're going through all of that and we will, we have an interim list right now of everything we know, we will have a comprehensive list of this is everything. A lot of the issues remaining in Hampton Park were what I'll call rear yard drainage, which was drainage pipes basically behind homes or between homes and lakes, things like that, that originally was intended to go to the CDD. They were pipes that were implanted drainage easements to the CDD. And there was probably, I don't know, 20 comments related to those items. The responses that we got back were, never mind, not, this is an exact word, but basically, never mind what it told originally, this isn't going to go to you guys anymore. This is going to go to another party. So, don't worry about those comments you gave us, that's going to someone else.
Bean.
Well, the only logical answer is the HOA, but they haven't said that yet to me.
They're pushing to turn over Hampton Park to the homeowners on July 31st, I believe that's the date that I read in an email. So they're pushing to get all of this, all this other paperwork cleared up prior to that turnover meeting on July 31st with the homeowners. That's why there's all of a sudden this big urgent push. But I think that we need to make it clear that, you know, they're wrong.
So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're working through it and I think there's a big, I guess, legal question on those items about the items that were originally going to be gateways and now apparently their intent is to no longer make them gateways, and I don't, I don't know how that ends up. I can give you my engineering perspective and say, hey, it doesn't meet your criteria, but as far as who gets them and how and all that, that's, that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse.
What's the, the issues with the drainage behind these houses? Tell me what you're talking about, how serious is this of an issue?
So there's, like in Phase 5, for example, which I think it's Astor Place, there's, there's a line of homes that backs up to a perimeter berm. There's drainage behind those houses to keep it from collecting water because they're split lots.
It's like field top.
So between the berm and the, the houses, there's drainage back there. I'm talking long runs of drainage, like 300 feet with a bunch of boxes, catch basins, 15-inch pipe, whole shebang. Originally that was in, it still is, in an easement platted to Gateway. Then a drainage easement, and the plate says, maintenance responsibility to be provided by Gateway. Your pipe is in there. So, there were items where some instances they were TV'd and either the pipes were full of dirt, or they were broken, or, some of them are fine, not every single one is broken, but there were issues with them. We say, you know, address these issues, or they didn't video them like they were supposed to, and we say, hey, provide the videos for these. And either they didn't provide them, or they said, listen, that's, we're not going to give that to Gateway anymore, don't worry about that comment. So, that's, that's basically where we're at with that issue.
That, that's their prerogative to do. However, there are some things they've got hurdles they've got to get over as we've been talking. One, they've got to change the covenants in their community, but if you read the covenants in the community, they also got to get the permission of South Florida Water Management District to do it. My thing is, right now, at this point in time, if they want to do that, that's fine, and they want to jump through those hoops, that's fine. I think the master HOA is well aware of the shortfalls of that pipe that they are going to have stuck on them. And I don't know that we can do anything about it because that is their prerogative to do. But the rest of that system, in fact, of the map that we just got today from them, that, from Baraco, it's not only that they're taking what used to be what we call secondary drainage facilities, those 8 and 15s in the back, they're now bringing the pipe that connects it into our system, the part that would be left over, which are the connector pipes that are again in our easements dedicated to us to maintain. So we're now not talking about 8 and 15-inch pipes, we've graduated to 24-inch diameter pipes. That's what I don't understand, what they're doing. If, if they would have just stayed to the 8 and 15, it, it could have been somewhat simple, could they have gotten South Florida Water Management District? And the way it goes over there, it seems to be that South Florida is being gracious to them, that everything they ask for, they get, so there's no sense of making a mountain out of a molehill with them. But the problem we have right now is I'm worried about the things that are coming to us, which he has in his interim letter, that we make sure they understand, guys, this stuff has to be addressed. They may very well come back, and if Chris sends that stuff out tomorrow, they may come out the next day and just say simply what Baraco has told us, we aren't doing it. And then we're.
Oh, we need that answer.
But we need to know the answer, because I, I don't want, I'm, I'm tired of hearing it by way of Tyler from Baraco. Baraco isn't the developer, it's Lennar. Lennar needs to tell us they won't do it, and then we're in a whole new ballgame.
I guess I should clarify, you know, so we've met with the developer's engineer two times now, and their stance hasn't been, hey, this is, you know, we're not doing anything else. Their stance has been, listen, we'll give you the stuff we can give you as an engineering firm, but there's stuff that we can't do as an engineering firm. An engineering firm can't go out and grow out a pipe or, you know, replace a box, say, listen, we'll give you what we can give you as far as maps and exhibits and things like that, but.
That's not the issue.
As far as construction work.
That's wrong.
You know, right.
Okay. All right.
So anyway, that's, that's the Hampton Park. So if we can get Chris to get that letter out tomorrow to Rhonda, and I'd, I'd even say, Chris, go so far as getting that copied to both Lee County and South Florida Water Management District. South Florida is just absolutely convinced, guys, we don't understand what part of, the engineer told us it was done and done right, we accepted it, get on with life. And I said, our problem is, we now have documentation in our hands from the same engineer that certified it that shows it's not right. You want us to accept that and you're going to turn around and cut our throat with it? We can't do that.
I guess the question, I have not an engineer, not a technical guy, but from the perspective of what our engineers and, you know, Tyler and Stephen and those guys have found are deficiencies in the constructed system, and what we've requested that they, Lennar, repair, the lines that Baraco reflects on the current documents received today as being turned over by Lennar to the HOA, are those the portions of the system that we have tagged as being defective? So, well, I think that's something that can be very obvious to an agency and say, okay, they're playing, you know, let, let's split over here, let's give the junk to the HOA, and let's give the good stuff to the districts, we can accept it, and that, and I, I don't know how a split system works.
He's not addressing the stuff that they, as I understand it in your interim, you're not addressing any of the things that they have told us they're going to give to the HOA.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, are they, they being Lennar and Baraco, creating documents like a map that says, okay, you have, you, the district have identified problems with this run of pipe? Okay, fine, we're not giving that to you, whether it's a 24 or not.
Haven't gone that far yet.
Is that what they're doing? Is that an essence of what they've done?
Basically, yes.
That's what I'm guessing.
Basically, the, the issue is this, in some cases, I'm not saying all cases, in some cases, we have found issues with pipe and/or structures and/or swales, et cetera. The response has been, that is not going to you, don't worry about that.
In the areas where you have not identified a problem, the response is, we'll give it to you, generally.
Generally, I mean, it's, it's all of the rear yard drainage they want to give to someone else, all of it, regardless of if it's good or bad. So, I, I shouldn't say that, you know, everything is good, they're giving to Gateway, that's not exactly true. They intend to, according to the stuff that I've seen from them, they intend to convey the rear yard drainage to an other party. The majority of the issues we have is in the rear yard drainage.
And that's where, I'll let Jim go first. Chairman, if I could really ask that, that's a question I want to ask quickly. I understood, Tyler, that you said that this rear yard drainage on Astor, you didn't address the one on Belkras, but the one on Astor you said is in Gateway Services CDD easement, correct? So, that easement would have to be conveyed to the HOA?
No.
So the HOA can maintain it?
No, there, the easement is generally a non-exclusive easement, the covenants provide that the association may have the ability to grant easements or give easements, or there's a clarion can.
If, if you've read that, you've got better eyes than I've got. I spent the other day up there, what, an hour, Chris, reading the plats and reading the plans, and it makes it clear that drainage facilities in that easement are dedicated to Gateway Services District. It doesn't say about, it says we can assign it, but it doesn't say that anything, any mention of the master HOA. Now, they can change that.
The covenant.
I just, I just have a quick comment, just in kind of how we're operating in this area. When it comes to WCI or Lennar, I think what we should be doing is, any engagement with, whether it's Rhonda or whoever is involved, if they're reaching out to you, Ed, I would, I would say, look, we need to set up a meeting and pull in, make sure Chris is there and engineering, if it, if it's pertinent, just so, I think we have to have a unified front here, and, I mean, no one appreciates all the, you know, all the behind the scenes work that, that you do, Ed, but I think, so we can make sure that we're all.
That's what we're doing. That's exactly what we're doing. Chris is writing the letter. We didn't get the letter till today.
No, no, I'm not telling you just here, I'm just saying, if, if you're getting engaged, you should just tell them, look, we need to set up a meeting with Chris and with our engineers so we can address this all together, because I think it puts us in a better position.
Going on. So we're going to get that letter out.
Just one thing, I think, Mr. Guy, you wanted to make a comment.
I do, thank you, Madam Chairman. I've heard the attorney and the engineer say that these properties are going to be turned over to a different body, namely the Hampton Park HOA, but that seems to be a, to me, to be a subterfuge, that sooner or later, those, that body is going to want to transfer those properties to us and they're going to be deficient. I, I hope you can dissuade me from that feeling.
Now you know my, feel my pain.
Got it right.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear him say it and get it on the record, okay?
Okay, so I'm going to carefully word this. I mean, in general, it is more feasible for the CDD as an entity to operate a stormwater system rather than an HOA. You guys have the staff to do those things, you have the mechanism to maintain those things, all that sort of stuff. However, me as your consultant, I cannot recommend to you that you would ever take those things without meeting the requirements that are, you know, set in your permit criteria manual to take them. So I can't recommend that you take a variety of things. Now, what may happen in 10 years from now when, you know, the HOA comes to the board and says, hey, we would really like to give you these pipes, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I can tell you that with my opinion, it's probably going to happen, but.
And what is that?
That probably there's going to be a request made by an other party for the CDD to maintain those if they end up with them. Now, if they go and, you know, make improvements on their nickel in order to get them to a condition where you would take them, maybe that happens, I don't know. You know, a lot of things could happen.
Don't bet on it.
But, you know, as far as me being your consultant, I cannot recommend that you would ever take those unless they meet your written requirements.
I agree.[1741.86]